Welcome to Commissioner's Court. It's 9:00 AM on May 14th, 2013. We're going to get started with the road call. Commissioner, yeah?
Here.
Commissioner Rosales.
Here.
Judge Shaw's here. Commissioner Beukin's not here. Commissioner Schindler?
Here.
Please stand and stay standing. Join us in opening prayer if they can.
Governor Paul, thank you for your all the blessings today. We thank you for the evening. Thank you for the recent rain from Seattle. We ask that you be with us today if we make decisions for the county. Continue to bless us in our daily lives. Jesus' name in the prayer.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number five, so this is the third. Mr. Buckman.
I want to speak to the request of County Attorney to change in his budget, transferring money from one line to another to the other. I have a letter here because I had asked for this when Commissioner's Court played with my budget on that item. New times, I was taking off, taking out, taking out. And so I went ahead and asked for a setting to be placed on the agenda and it turned down. So I'm going to read part of the letter, but I did hear the letter from Ben Navarro, Rocha, and Val. On behalf of the County Judge, I am demanding to request for the placement of certain items on the agenda of the Corinth County Commissioners Court. These items raise certain legal and factual issues that must be addressed prior to informal placement in the agenda of the Commissioners Court. And we'll skip down paragraph that they had parked as second. You are requesting an amendment to the budget of the office of County Attorney. Now, bearing in mind, I was not, and I knew I was not going to be County Attorney for the next 12 months. I'm trying to get the budget set up for her. Second, you are requesting an amendment to the budget of the office of County Attorney. Specifically, you are increasing, you are seeking an increased line item of $25,000 for an Assistant County Attorney. Local Government Code 111.010 requires that after final approval of the county budget, Commissioners Court may spend county money, cannot be found, only, yes, the word is, it should be him, only in strict compliance with the budget except in an emergency. Commissioners Court may authorize an emergency expenditure as an amendment to the original budget only in cases of a grave public necessity to meet an unusual or unfortunate condition that could not have been included in the original budget through the use of reasonable dealership, thought, and intention. Your request for an increased line item does not set forth in legal justice case for certain amendment. In fact, this very matter, money budget for an Assistant County Attorney, discussed, debated, and modified during the process. Therefore, it hardly qualifies as an unforeseen condition of the law requires. Consequently, until some evidence of grave public necessity has been offered to premature it to place such a nature of the Commissioners Court agenda. Secondly, I understand the meaning of you asking for it has not been, it's not in the budget. There's no debt to be paid out of that item. I think you can't modify that until there is somebody or something that needs to be paid out of that line item. But I don't think you can do that. This is not my opinion. This is your loss. Please.
Thank you.
Chairman Hall. Good morning. I can to you speak again, as I've done many times like a broken record, on 46% of Corinth County taxpayers to Lillen County roads. The rural people of Corinth County ask for a change in hopes of improvement to our road infrastructure by voting in the unit system. We wanted to change, something that would improve and make our roads better. The system is designed to work under proper management and qualified leadership in the form of a road engineer. If you are unable to find a qualified road engineer, why not consider a professional firm to come in and analyze the roads and develop a plan to improve our roads, possibly even contract out the work to be done properly? I have a list available here that if any of you want a copy of, I'll be happy to make for you. It is out of pies A to Z, full of companies pre-approved by Tech Doc. They can do anything from analyzing your roads, cost analysis, telling you how to spec them out properly. They can actually do the work for you if you want it done. All of them are pre-approved by Tech Doc, all in the state of Texas. We've moved forward with the courthouse renovation and the plans for a new jail because of the professional assistance of Lorraine Bailey. Why can we not see this type of interest with our road system? In the past, the funds have been an issue in this county. You've always had a tight budget. You had to appropriate it out. This is not the case any longer. You've addressed the courthouse. You've addressed the jail. And the roads were still out there beating our cars up. It's a danger. And this is not even just where the Eagle Ford are. There's parts of this county and sections of this county that are not suffering under that, but they're still neglected. I will tell you personally, on my county road, hasn't seen a shredder in over a year. And you can come and look at research. Bush is on the edge, five foot tall. That will attest for that. So it's just neglect. It's lack of organization. It's lack of proper leadership. And we've got to quit wasting money, doing things the same old way, the same way that things have always been done. Try and save the county money doing a bridge, you know, the PXP bridge. Was it fixed properly? Would it pass inspection? Would a road gen, would an engineer sign off on it? Would an engineer sign off on what happened with Walfer Charlesney? An engineer wouldn't have signed up on that because they could have risked the authenticity of their license. These things would not happen, and it's costing our county money. How much is it going to cost us to fix, clean up the debris that was dumped on the San Antonio River? How much is it going to cost the taxpayers to fix that? It's time to do things the right way. We have the money to do it the right way. Let's seek out some proper and professional help to the Department, please.
Could I have a copy of that whenever you get a chance?
Absolutely. Marry, Senator.
Good morning. Speaking this morning regarding item 16, request by County Attorney Herb Hancock for $7,500 to pay for assistance. If this is wrong, County Attorney Department, this request for $7,500 is totally inadequate for the job he has to perform for the remainder of this budget year. The original budget submission last year for an Assistant County Attorney was properly submitted by Dent County Attorney Bob Bustle in the amount of $25,000. Presiding Officer of this Commissioners Court, with the assistance of PPR interfering and without judicial or statutory authority, you, Barbara Shaw, reduce that budget submission to zero in retaliation because he would not comply with your demands to fire Betty Yarre then the Assistant County Attorney. The long-term effect is what we have today. Mr. Hancock deserves to run his office without interference and with sufficient funds to execute the functions of that office. In that this is an agenda item, I'm requesting that the Commissioners Court during the discussion phase of this item, that the County Attorney's Office budget be restored to the original requested amount of $25,000 so that he can properly function as a County Attorney, which will give him the capability to prosecute all the cases brought before the county. This, in fact, will comply with the requirements of emergency amendment to the budget because Mr. Hancock could not have foreseen the illegal acts of the Presiding Officer and at least one member of the Commissioners Court, Mr. Yarre. If the County Attorney needs an Assistant County Attorney, that is his call, his authority to hire, and to do so without any input or interference from any other, from any other office, to include the Presiding Officer or the Commissioners Court. As a matter of fact, and as a matter of law, the Presiding Officer and the Commissioners Court are specifically prohibited by Texas statute of interfering with another elected official office in any manner. In this particular instance, violation of the tenons of judicial conduct and violations of Texas statute, you, the Commissioners Court, will do a great and continuous disservice to this county and the ability of the County Attorney to execute the responsibility of his office without sufficient funds. It is my recommendation that the Commissioners Court restore the County Attorney's Office to the original budget amount of $25,000 as an emergency amendment to the current budget.
That's all.
Number six, reading of points. You're on the first one. Did it say solid with on number four?
Ninety day extension.
No, the very first one.
Right.
Down at the bottom.
That's what the agenda item ran.
Did it say ninety extension?
Mm-hmm.
Should have said ninety day.
Not to get straight through the agenda.
Straight through the agenda.
No, it didn't.
I have to look at it. That's what we do.
All right. I want to approve the minutes that had presented. Number seven.
Um, yes. It's number seven. All clear, as they are.
All right.
Motion carries towards zero. Number eight is discuss approval, disapproval, wanting good for courthouse phase one. Still bids will publicly open at two PM, May 8th, 2013. You look at the papers.
This is.
Yeah. Hold on a minute. Well, total of the bids, Scott Martin, two million, three hundred forty-two thousand. AC Standard, two million, four hundred thousand, and MJ Ball, one million, eight hundred fourteen thousand. This is quite a bit over the, there's a difference that we had, where they also had the French drain added in there, which Grand Lou will explain the prices on that. He's going to give us a little presentation on it. They all had the bid bonds. And so that, I think I'll turn over to Grand Lou to try to go over what he has to say about bids. He has been in contact with the contractors, and especially with MJ Ball, who's a real bidder, to see what could be saved from this project. If we have a 500, a 50% 523 million dollar grant assistance, if we can leave some of this out, we would get more benefit from our assistance.
Five million or 500,000?
Five hundred thousand, yeah. 523,000.
Go ahead, Grant.
Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning. How are you?
Uh, Graham Lou, architect for Phase 1A. And we, as Commissioner Yarre mentioned, we, at the pre-bid, mandatory pre-bid, we had three general, four general contractors express interest who were qualified to do the restoration work on historic courthouse and had been recommended by the Texas Historic Commission. Three bids came in, as Commissioner Yarre mentioned. The low bid of the three, of the three that were submitted was oil construction out of San Antonio, who also were the general contractors for the West Wing and the previous demolition project. We've been talking with the apparent low bidder, oil construction. Bids were received last Wednesday, May 8th, and started talking with them last Thursday, and then again Monday and Tuesday of this, Monday of this week. The items that we were, we asked them to submit a list of things that they thought I could be able to help in a reduction. And at the same time, we've been exploring with major structural engineers who prepared most of the structural documents. If we deleted the first floor slab, right now, the plans expects call for demolition of the existing first floor slab and saving the marble tile for future installation in a future Phase Two in order to do the structural work. And after all the structural work in the, below the first floor is done, the drill footings and stabilization of injection and soil preparation, mud slab, basement tunnel for the new mechanical systems to run in, in a basement mechanical room, and stair to get access down, all of that is below that first floor slab. So if we deleted the first floor slab as part of this right now, then it would produce a $104,000 reduction. Eighty-four thousand for the construction work, but they figured seven months, and I went back to them. And so the overhead reduction would be 20,000. So that totals about 104,000 reduction. If we postpone the French drain system, which goes around the perimeter of the building and then goes north to the street through asphalt part of it, that would save 238,142. There was a small exhaust, mechanical exhaust system called for in the basement. That is not, that can be postponed and done in Phase Two, and that's 4,980. And we've talked to the injection subcontractor, Haywood Baker, who would do the concrete injection under the existing, all existing corbeled brick footings down below that would stabilize and begin to level the building, which is the major cause of all the damage to the courthouse in the past. And they said that if they went from a four-foot spacing, which there did call for, to a five-foot spacing for each of the holes to inject the ground, that they could save about 12,000 dollars for that. So we began to talk to the subs, to the general contractor, and we need to have a meeting with them. And Commissioner Yarre, perhaps, either later this week or sometime next week, to home in on getting the bottom line that would be acceptable to the Commissioners to enter into. Included in the original bid is a 75,000 dollar contingency allowance, which would not be used unless approved for any excerpts or unknown conditions that are discovered after excavations or encountered. So that is still in the bid at this point, not taken out to cover unknown or unforeseen items. Would like to answer any questions that Commissioners might have related to this process.
When you say you're postponing any kind of work and saving money, but if you postpone till Phase Two, will it be more expensive later on?
A year from now, and talking to the contractor, the French drain, they said would be done for the same amount, 230. It depends on how long it's postponed. But within a year, they said probably it'd be close to the same. That depends on, the contractor would be on the job, finishing a job by, and then if they have to set up and come back with a time delay, then that might increase the cost.
Of course, they have that lots ago.
Yeah. And they're on the other job side end and so forth. They're off this job. So right now, we've been fortunate. They were finishing up the West Wing project, and then the selected demolition and environmental was kind of packed along to let them keep going. And so if it was designed, if the budget had been available, a bid to come in to have them be able to begin in June, the environmental sense, so they would be continuously working straight through, or a contractor would, in this case, oil well, a little bit, who had been working the previous jobs.
Thank you.
Good, you remember. I want to discuss on home, Marry. As far as the, as far as the French drain, we decided to put this in here at this time because it's going to be excavated around the courthouse. So if they, in this project, they're talking about excavating at 10-foot spacing. Is that correct?
Yes. Right now, it's another item we're exploring, and we haven't gotten a resolution on if they could do more than 10-foot increments. And they go, you don't want to excavate the whole building because of chance of damaging the foundation for the, for our structure. So these structural engineers suggested that, or the bid was based on 10-foot spacing, and then alternating that around the building and then coming back. And in any event, the French drain would be 100% excavation eventually, and could be done at a later date. It was just easier to try to do it in the beginning. What we're calling for, and also in consultation with the Historic Commission, is to excavate all of the brick footings down to the bottom of those footings, which is approximately seven, eight feet, and then tuck point. Make sure all the mortar is good, then waterproof that on the perimeter and put a recovery board and protection. And then the French drain and the gravel will go in and go back on around, and then from north to the street to the north. It can be done at a later date and postponed if we want to get the contractor that down, seeing if having begin with stabilization and the other foundation work.
So our, our consideration is this. We can do this now, and it'll be ready. We can put the floor in now, and it'll be ready to go in Phase Two. We have the $4 million in bond money. And if we have, we would have to spend an extra, what, only $750,000, $780,000 out of bond money now, then we, we would probably have to spend later anyway. But we're only going to get a total of six million in grant money from the state. So we can spend it now, or we can spend it later. And so it's, it's just whether we want to go ahead and do all of this and get it all ready. Because in the end, we're probably going to spend all this money. So if you all want us to negotiate and spend less money down, and if it's all can be held off on, go ahead.
It's got to be done.
On all this, the first floor, the eighty-four, the seven weeks, the twenty, exhaust system, everything else there, seems right. The French drain on the ending, on the ending phases, that's not going to be, in a way, it won't be damaged during the ending phases?
No.
My favor is, sooner we can get done with it, the better.
I'm just asking them not to step on our toes, you know, maybe or anything.
What do you think, Graham?
It would be nice to get all the structural elements done and the slab board. We could maybe, and the tile is not called for to go back until Phase Two on that slab. And that, because of protection of that, that'd be one of the last things. But it just needs to store, taken off under this contract and then stored till later Phase Two. But the structural slab for the But the structural slab for the new first floor would allow then phase two to have a platform to work from and go on up. So it would be desirable if that could be done, but it's depending on the money situation for the, for the bid amount.
That's understandable, the only question I have of the French drain, you know, because that's going to be...
French drain could be done postponed, and that mechanical exhaust system could be postponed. And the recommendation to do the five-foot spacing, I think, could be accepted at this point to save about twelve thousand dollars. All of that could be done to help get it down, or at least knock off those amounts.
Do you think the French drain, I think it'll be all right, finishing up with the other phases?
So once you do the foundation, I'd like to see French drain in there. So if we don't get accumulated water, if we get flooded for a year, I'd like to see it in there, that's my opinion.
Next up.
You know, for an athlete, you got a bond, plus whatever you get from the state in grants. Is that going to be enough money to take this project to completion?
We don't know that at this time. We don't know what the phase two would be, we're not sure of that. This came in over this one hour ago, it wasn't that much, the fault was, because you take the two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, there is about, it was about twelve percent over what's asked for.
Would you think Lorraine might have some input into this if she's been on site from the beginning? Maybe she could answer the question about proceeding on with it or not, of her opinion this?
Certainly, Graham, Graham and I have been working closely after the bids came in and we have also been working with Mr. Boyle. We were concerned that he was so much lower and he has gone back because the other two contractors were very close in price, but because of his familiarity with the project and he also aggressively ran after the project, and he's doing a lot of the work in-house that some of these other contractors took sub bids from. Instead of he used the sub bids that came in, instead of electing to self-perform some of his work, he would have been right up there with the other guys. So that was the first thing we wanted to make sure is, can he really complete this? And he has completed the other work and actually, if you look, we presented back on how to spend the rest of the money that was left over. So he was, he did complete the work within his previous amounts and actually gave the contingency monies back. The, the question about, is there enough money to finish the whole project, you know, that has been discussed. And until phase two is gone after and we know how much the court gives us, or the, not the court, but the THC gives us, we won't know. But, but what we'll have to do is work with them to complete everything that we can with the monies that are available, both the bond monies and the, you know, the matching grants. So the, the two ways that Graham and I looked at this was, one is, all of this work still does have to be done. If, is, was there anything that could be delayed until phase two possibly and not be detrimental? Those were the items that Graham presented. When it does come to the end, I believe that based on the matching grants, because of the amount of the bond monies that you already have, you will still have extra bond monies that you could put towards the courthouse. So it would be better to go ahead and do the French drain and not risk, you know, the, you're stabilizing, we're already spending, we spent a million dollars on the west side and then we're spending a million dollars to stabilize the foundation. Having that French drain in place will only benefit your foundation and the drainage because we all know that water and soil expansion contraction is one of the main culprits of foundation failures. So if the court is willing, it would be better to get the French drain in at this time and go ahead, like Graham said, pour that floor back and be ready for phase two. It's going to have to be done anyway, it's just a matter of do we do it now or do it later? And we can't control the future, but now the contractor's looking at the pricing, saying if things, if he's projecting it right, it'll cost about the same, but we don't ever know what happens in the future. So now we do have a hard bid, we know it's a good bid in the sense that it's five hundred, what was it? Like five or six hundred thousand less than the other contractor, so we know it's a good competitive bid. So if the court is willing, the only, the only other thing that we would like to look at, maybe saving some money, is you do the, do the twelve thousand dollar spacing for the injections, save that twelve thousand as long as everybody's in agreement structurally, and then look at doing more than the ten-foot excavations if structurally everybody's happy and feels comfortable with that, there's a little bit of savings there. We may want to define the quantity of the point of masonry now before we left the contract because some of that masonry load bearing was in better shape than we thought. And so if we defined exactly either how much time or quantity he has in there for that value of, the repoint of the masonry was a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars to repoint that masonry. So say it's fifty percent better when they get down there, there's, you know, a hundred thousand dollars that could be saved. So I think we could structure the wording of the contract to the benefit of the county. If they get down there and find better conditions, instead of them getting to just pocket that, it would go back to you. So I would like to suggest that as a potential savings also.
Right, we only get four testos on the exterior and the condition of the masonry was really not that bad. But until we get on the interior where all the masonry load bearing walls and everything are and excavate that out, there's no way to know what the condition is of the masonry. And I think that would be a good suggestion to see what Boyle could come up with as a firm figure, reducing that thing on until those excavations are done and then hopefully it's better than, or equal to the four testos that they did recently.
And then the exhaust system, since it's not going to be hooked up, it's probably better not to hook it in there anyway because how do you test it, how do you make sure it continues to run? I mean, it probably should just, I think that should be delayed until there's five thousand dollars there.
This is totally unlawful, sit down, Marista, we're not going there, we're staying with the agenda.
I was going to say, she does an incredible job.
But stand up and address the court, that is ridiculous. If you want to run it for Commissioner, run. Until then, please be seated. Go ahead, Graham. So I guess where we're at is to discuss approve, disapprove, awarding a bid, phase one A, sealed bid, proposal to be opened at 2:00 P.M. Do you have a recommendation of the bid we should accept?
I would recommend that you accept Boyle as the little bidder to go into further negotiations for a final price, not to exceed the one point eight, Megan, and try to get to a firm amount, love that, with some of the things that we've suggested.
What do you guys think?
Okay, with that said, I'd like to motion, I guess. I recommend that we accept M.J. Boyle's bid on phase one A of the courthouse for one million eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to be negotiated with the assistance of two Argentines and leave out items which are not essential to save the city money at this time.
I second that motion as stated. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries for zero. Never notice, discuss approve, disapprove, proposals submitted by R.J. Air Conditioning and Heating to the insulation of GE fifty-five plant dehumidifier, the Diverse Tech sub pump with twenty-two foot lift to be installed at the Anson Square to fill West Calvert at a total cost of nine hundred and three dollars. Please put that on there. Can you find it in your package, sort of, this from my gentleman's desk?
That's for the computer room right across the hall there. Main use of that is in the wintertime when we have heat on, to keep it cool for the computers, no problem right now. So it's out, it's working fine, exactly what you're talking about. I asked three, uh, air conditioning people to give a bid on this and this is the only one I got. I asked Bernice Alisson, Jean Swartz, and anyone who came forward and things.
Five seven fifteen, is this in the... Yeah, it's in there, there's plucking impactations and five seven for that.
So this will have a, the other one that, one that was in there did not have a water display. Water guide is a beautiful and cool board. This will have a pump in it to pump the water, direct it out up into the drain. So this is the only one, only price I had, why this is what we have to consider, if we want to fix it.
Well, it's for the computer room, right?
For computers.
We can't let the computers still, it'll be maybe, I mean, you can fill it right here, right, I don't know if y'all fill it, but it's going to be in here. I just need somebody to make a motion.
All right, I'd make a motion if we accept RJ's price on dehumidifier and sub pump for the computer room.
So that's number nine as written, please. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries for zero. The next item on the agenda is discuss approve, disapprove, proclaiming the week of May twelfth to May seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, as National Police Week in Karnes County, and allow County Judge to execute a proclamation. Sheriff, did you bring it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. You want to read it? It says, "Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, as Police Memorial Day and the week of the fifteenth as National Police Week, and whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career play an essential role in preserving the freedoms, rights, safety, and security of the citizens of Karnes County, and whereas the officers of the Karnes County Sheriff's Office provide a vital public service, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, hazard, responsibilities, and sacrifices of the officers of the Karnes County Sheriff's Office, and recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas each week we observe, May fifteenth is Police Memorial Day to honor those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled by protecting their fellow citizens. And whereas these officers who have dedicated their lives to the service of humanity through law enforcement, those officers who have given their lives in this noble cause should be recognized and remembered. And whereas fitting the proper of the Karnes County Commissioners Court, along with all citizens of Karnes County, Texas, averve May fifteenth, two thousand thirteen as Police Memorial Day and May thirteenth through May seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, as Police Memorial Week in Karnes County. Texans, in honor of the brave and valiant service rendered by the officers on the Karnes County Sheriff's Office. Now therefore, I, Barbara Shaw, by virtue and the authority vested in me as Judge of the County of Karnes, State of Texas, do hereby proclaim in Karnes County, May fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, as Police Memorial Day and May two thousand, and May twelfth through May seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, as Police Memorial Week. In witness thereof, I have a guarantee in my hand and causing official still of the Karnes County, Texas, to be affixed this fourth, fifth, and May two thousand thirteen."
I'll make the motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries for zero. Number eleven is discuss approve, disapprove, a request by Lucie F. Jalloway, trustee of the Lucie F. Jalloway Trust, to abandon zero point three four acre roadway on the Don Arazos Dean Grant, asset number two in Karnes County, Texas, and portion of the county road within the town of Hops in Karnes County, Texas. And indeed, with that warranty, a portion of the abandoned roadway to Lucie F. Jalloway, trustee of the Lucie F. Jalloway Trust. The abandoned road joins the Jalloway Trust properties, and that's Ferling Jalloway, Senator trustee. Is he here? Has he talked to Mr. Hancock?
He had not yet, he hasn't signed.
Okay. No, we'll take no action, no action on that one. Number twelve is discuss approve, disapprove, amending the budget for County Judge, Veterans Services Officer, County Attorney, and Ag Extension Service to allow for the fees charged for transferring firm service, AT&amp;T, Dotson Associates, from one fifteen North Market to two ten West Calvert, two ten West Calvert to one fifteen North Market, as approved by Commissioners Court on one thirty-one thirteen. Twenty-two ninety-four oh two, County Judge, County Judge six eighty-nine ninety-four, Veterans of Services Officer two twenty-five, County Attorney six ninety-three sixty-two, and Ag Extension six eighty-five forty-six.
Those are the actual costs incurred for moving the phone lines. I have not received any bills yet for the relocation of the computers, but these bills have been incurred and need to be payments.
These payments, they have to get paid, it's already done.
They require county business, yes.
Now, the only, the only issue I had here was I had asked if this was something done, like unforeseen or something like that, it was grave public necessity and I think Ross, Roland said it was. The only problem is, I don't, on my part, I'm going to pay for it, I'm going to vote to go ahead and make the motion, pay for it, but I don't think it's a great public necessity. I'm going to do it to remain, you know, do it county business and we, it's already done, we agreed to do it. So that's why I'm going to vote to pay for it.
As written?
As written.
Is that a motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries for zero. Number thirteen is acknowledgment of the first budget workshop, workshop, fiscal year two thousand fourteen, Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand thirteen, at nine AM, and that's, Lawana put that on there. Lawana, did we not, I thought we had said Monday too, did we not, or did we scratch that?
You said the Monday or Tuesday, Mondays are normally terrible sites, so I'll do Tuesday.
Budgets, we just want everybody to know it's going to start then, and budget workshop should be a little less painful and got it early to follow. So if everybody can just get their stuff in, I think, Dela, did you read sheets today?
I will get those out to the respective entities today.
Thank you so much. Number fourteen is discuss approve, disapprove, allowing the County Police Office to hire two part-time people for the summer months, hours with budgeted but not used for part-time help, and that's Carol.
Last year at budget time, I asked for an extra part-time position, which I did not fill because I was worried about then having to let someone go if the business didn't stay as steady. And so I have, I don't know how many hours, it was thirty-two hours a week or something, that I never used them. So I thought for the summer, I wanted to hire two high school kids to come in, maybe twenty-five to thirty hours a week, and clean the shelves, that's not something that the maintenance does here, there's just too many of them. Clean the shelves, clean the books, and just get everything back in order again, and maybe continue that every year for the, you know, each summer. So I still won't go over the hours, the hours are already in there.
But just because it was budgeted, I'm sorry, you just want to use the money you have?
I do, and because it was budgeted for one part-time person at thirty-two hours a week, we need to have it approved for it to be two part-time people for just the summer weeks.
How about the motion to approve, agenda item fourteen is written.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries for zero. Number, huh? Number fourteen, uh, number fifteen, discuss approve, disapprove, purchase at the end of County Road three ninety-four and three ninety-five of the back alley. I purchased two acres of land at the end of road on the right, right-hand side. The county road dead ends into private property and land across the street is free of access to property. And that author is John Todd Holder from Holder LLC. Are you, Mr. Holder?
Yes, ma'am.
How are you?
Yeah, we purchased just this two point oh, just a little over two acres of land at the end of County Road three ninety-four. Just got the nine and one address, it's actually going to be five five five, County Road three ninety-four. But that, currently the end of the road is not improved, it's not, it's not paved or anything, it's just grown up grass. It's about three hundred foot, seventy-five, right away, three hundred foot long that we would like to see, we could possibly purchase from the county. The land across the street has over four hundred and fifty foot of... The, the land across the street has over four hundred and fifty foot of right-of-way access to their property, to the acre across the street, and they also, uh, may, might now have the current access to, to that property. It's from the highway. And, uh, so we were just looking to see if that would be a possibility to purchase that kind of road, that, that area from, since it dead ends into the Southland Ranch.
It sounds so simple, Mr. Holder, but I don't think it's that simple. I think according to statute, you have got to ask us to abandon that right-of-way and do a posting that you would take to the county clerk's office and have posted into the legal notices and stuff. We've done that before, and then like a quick claim deed, but that would be something that you would have to either hire an attorney or... I can figure out how y'all would go about that process. Unfortunately, we don't have the staff, the staff on hand to do stuff like that for you. We had, now, we had a similar situation. Y'all removed the back alley not long ago, or it was, it was, there was two parts of an alley, and we quit claim deed one to one side, and we quit claim deed part of that alley to the other side. And I can show you copies of what those people did because it's public record and give you an idea of what needs to be done. But we can't just do it by motion. It's not that simple.
Okay, well, when I, I, I think I talked to Commissioner Rosales.
So we're to court, and we, yeah. We decide what to do right there.
And so, I mean, it's something we'd like to help you with. We just have to go about it in a way in which, I mean, I'd be willing to shell paperwork.
This is the start off, you know, taking it into court would be a start.
Okay, so what would we need to do first, then?
Well, I would have to, I'd have to look and see, because if I tell you anything, I'm telling you blindly, but somebody's gone through this process, what, a couple of times on the right-of-ways? We had half of a right-of-way and half of a right-of-way. Do you remember that? And how did that long ago?
Best thing to do is, we could make with the county attorney, and we could go up through the procedures, but this is to start bringing it to court, so we, you make the whole court aware of what we're trying to do.
Okay, and as far as access to our property, it's currently, well, it's not now, because we've driven through there several times, and we put a pad in, but it was grown up. Is it, I mean, is that something that the county needs to provide us access to our property?
Or exactly, is it done?
This is all grown up right here.
And the two acres you keep on the line? From the square. That's where like...
Yeah.
We got the same part right there. And then is that part right there? This is open.
This, this is a lot of credit.
Like that south. So you actually have, um... Yeah, each one of them is actually two. Right.
It actually, actually more than two.
Okay.
To check the, start to see if they're going to check.
Okay.
That is first, and start out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, John.
John, keep with us. Let's figure out what, I'll show you what everybody else did.
Okay. Thank you.
So no action on number fifteen? Number sixteen is discuss, approve, disapprove, the transfer of seventy-five hundred dollars from substitute counsel to special counsel. That's her. Herb, do you want to come up and tell us something?
The request is pretty straightforward. It's not an increase in the budget. It's just transferring that item. I, uh, would like to possibly get a specialist to look over my shoulder as far as dealing with the contract. Especially for the jail, because it's, the jail project between nine and I'm sure eleven, twelve million dollars, and I don't think we have any room for error. And it's been a while since I've done contracts, but I think I'm all right. I just would like somebody to look over my shoulder. And grade my papers and make sure that I'm doing everything the way that I need to do it. And that's the reason for the transfer, uh, or request for transfer. I don't have any buddy in mind at this time. I attended a meeting last week, uh, in San Antonio. Talked to several attorneys for the different agencies, the parish county in Dallas, in Austin. Have some contacts there that could kind of give me some recommendations. The cost to hire a law firm is between three and seven hundred dollars an hour. I don't know how many hours I've made, but I would anticipate not more than three or four at this point, if I need them at all. But I don't want to get myself combined, and that's the reason for the request for transfer at this time.
And it's just from one line item to the other out of your budget, correct?
That's correct.
I need some clarification. Currently in his budget, there is not a special counsel line item. Are we moving from his substitute line item within his budget and creating a special counsel line item?
There's no word to move this money to what he's requesting. Is that what you're saying? There's not a line item that we can actually move this into. We'd have to create a new line item to put this money in.
Would that not come under our already budgeed special counsel monies?
I don't know. Wait, wait, if I might address that issue. The special counsel money that we're talking about belongs to the Commissioners Court, and this is money that is in a different budget item. And Commissioners sometime have one responsibility, and county attorney sometime has another responsibility. And I don't want to get mixed up in those issues at this time as a reason for the request transfer. We can't do it, but it's have to, have to work within what we've got. That is my request. I think we can change it over to another line if we need to.
No, I think what, what you're asking for, it's like, you need someone to look over your shoulder, and I agree with that. I mean, if you don't feel one hundred percent comfortable, and this is a nine or ten, eleven million dollar job, I agree with that. I just, like, on this here, if we can't do it, is there any other way that whenever you do need someone, if you request someone, can you bring it to us here? Or, there's no words. You can pull it out of any other line item?
I don't have any place, I don't have any money anywhere else.
What line item would that be considered? Or is that what, how, it'd be tied up?
Currently in the budget is substitute county attorney.
Okay, that's what the ninety-five hundred dollars are?
He's wanting to move, yes, that's what the budget balance is approximately that time. He's wanting to move seventy-five hundred out of that, as I understand the agenda item. My comment is, we don't have a special counsel line item in the county attorney's budget. That would have to be created. I need to know if that's the direction this is going. Or if this would qualify under our already budgeed special counsel fees that previously didn't have a rate that paid out of, that currently has a budget balance of about forty-two thousand dollars.
So there's still plenty left in Dentmaro?
Correct. Well, it's not Dentmaro's special counsel.
There's still forty-two thousand left in that?
Yes, and the construction of the jail, and it's, and the contracts are a county project. So I don't see why those funds can also come out of the special counsel fees for the county.
Or it could come out of jail funds. It's just strictly for the jail contract. It could come out of jail funds, correct?
As in the bond funds?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
I think we have a place where we can get, where you can need help. I mean, I understand what you're saying. We don't want our contracts in a...
I did, the, the main concern I have is that I don't want to get in conflict with county commissioners or anyone else. I have an independent responsibility that's different from others, and that is to see that this contract complies with the legal aspects and nothing else. I don't have any ability to control the material of the, uh, decision-making process other than, than the responsibility to deal with the legal. Now, if we can use it out of the forty-three or forty-four thousand, I don't have any problems doing that, but it would appear to me, if we do that, that I'm going to have to come back to the Commissioners at some point and say, look, I spent five thousand dollars out of your budget, now prove it. And that's what has been the big complaint all along, is that I do things before anything is done, so I don't have any choice. I mean, you got to do it ahead of time. I can't plan these things other than through this process here. And tell you, it probably will not be any more than seventy-five hundred dollars. I need approval to spend that kind of money if I need to. Uh, and then I'll come to the Commissioners and tell them what I spent it on. I don't have any problem with that, of what law firm that I'm, I'm talking to. But if I, I, I'm caught between a rock and a hard spot.
How about we look into it, and we take no action on this one. We look into it and see if we can pull it out of the special funds, whether it's forty-two, forty-three, and then if possible, we can do it. The next, whenever you do need someone and you do agree with who you need, you can come back to us, and then we can, and if everything's good, we can do it that way. But the money not denying you in any way, because I understand that if you need someone to look over your shoulder, I agree with that a hundred percent. Just doing it is what it's correct.
We, we haven't got a lot of time left, because we're getting close to, uh, what we're going to do on the jail. Uh, the, uh, the county, uh, courthouse is in its final stages, and I'm okay with that. But the jail is my main concern at this time. I just, uh, there are some questions I have about insurance. There are some questions I have about some subrogation clauses and some other clauses that only attorneys that handle civil contracts between ag, not agencies, government agencies, I can handle that. But I just need somebody to look at it from the standpoint of a contract only and nothing else. So that's where I am at this point. I don't, where you get the money from is certainly left up to y'all. I don't mind. I'm just telling you, I need it. If you can help me, I, I would appreciate it. If you can't, I'll do the best I can with what I've got.
We're going to help. No, that's not, Ryan take home is like, this is crazy. If it hurts our county attorney, and if that's what he wants to do, we've got to respect him.
No, I agree. I'm not in no way saying that you don't, that I, I would love to have, you know, other counsel with you. If you're, you're not one hundred percent comfortable, that's, I mean, I don't have a problem just doing it correctly.
The, the other thing, I'm okay with. I, the only thing that I wanted to address is really the insurance that is necessary on the, the jail complex. And as y'all know, it's going to be between, I would estimate point eight and twelve million dollars. That's a pretty good sized chunk of money, and I don't want to make any mistakes.
That's fine. Well, and also, I mean, I think we're misconstruing the word special counsel. Special counsel for the county is for the county, not Commissioners Court. I mean, the whole county's represented.
Okay, well, I don't have any, you know, that's fine with me. It's, you know, I don't mind coming to the Commissioners Court. I don't mind doing whatever I need to do. You guys tell me what you want to do. I would, I need probably somebody to look over my shoulder. I may not.
I think it would be helpful.
You know what you need, Herb. Do your job. You know what you need.
Available for one, you know, if you need to.
I think that's our body to hire, sure. Commissioners Court does the hiring, so if you hire one to assist the county, that's the way it works.
We're going to let you do your job. You are our county attorney re-traction. Unless y'all have something that y'all don't. Agree with it.
So right now, we won't do anything on this. Y'all, what do y'all want me to do? Just, uh, going back and...
They could come out as special counsel.
Well, I'm saying y'all can get the authority to have someone look over the contract if that's what's needed, but it would just be paid out of our already budgeed special counsel fees. We can do that.
Can you give me that authority with this agenda item?
With not with this agenda item, we can't, because it's not stated in the agenda item.
But if you, if you do something, Herb, and it, it comes out, you just come and tell us you had to use special counsel, and we'll pay it through that special counsel line item fee.
I understand. You, if you need it, you need it, but we can't give you the, we can't make a motion on this item. It's not stated like that.
But can we put this on the next agenda specifically set out, and I believe you got one Friday?
Yes, sir, I can.
Because I don't feel comfortable making this decision without it being in the agenda itself.
We'll do that for you over the meeting Friday.
If you could do that, I would appreciate it.
We'll do it for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And number seventeen is Consider Act Setting General Liability Monetary Requirements for General Contractors. Due to the evil productivity, it's been hard to find local contractors to do work for the county to include building maintenance and concrete work for the Roden Bridge Department. Local contractors might be able to obtain insurance if we had a set amount of required insurance to do contract work for various departments as needed. Record amended that amounts of one hundred thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand be considered. And that's Shelby. I think what the thing was, is y'all remember something that was like this in the courthouse with Matt? He said that the insurance was too high? So Shelby put this on here, but Shelby's not here to explain it. Shelby went for a ride. So y'all want to take no action and put this back on when Shelby's here?
No action.
Let Shelby tell us where he's going with it? Next one is the tax collector. Shannon, leave copy of that stuff. Are you leaving?
All righty. Corrections for the month of April. For the county, uh, collect the month of April was seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-one cents. Year-to-date, seven million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-two cents, with a collection rate of ninety-five point seven two percent. On the delinquent roll for the county, month of April, five thousand, nine seventy-two twenty-seven. Year-to-date, sixty-one thousand, seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cents, with a delinquent roll collected of twenty-nine point one six two three percent. Roden Bridge, for the month of April, four thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and eight cents. Year-to-date, one million, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Current roll collected, ninety-five point seven four nine five percent. The delinquent roll for Roden Bridge, month of April, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Year-to-date, six thousand, six ninety-five seventy-three, uh, collection rate at thirty-four point zero zero five percent. Rural Fire, month of April, total collected, two thousand, two seventy-four ninety-six. Year-to-date, nine hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and seventeen cents, with a collection rate of ninety-five point seven percent. Delinquent roll, Roden Bridge, current month of April, three hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. Total year-to-date, three thousand, eight fifty-five twenty-six percent of delinquent roll collected, thirty-eight point four percent.
Why? Number nineteen is discuss, approve, disapprove, Sheriff's Court.
If you will go to, um, page two on the printed-out report. That's, uh, you can see the handwritten corrections that were made on there, and we were reviewing it. There was a check that was written for the Sheriff's Department, Leo's Fund, that actually got posted to the Trooper Hotel Fund. So we just had to move it to where correctly needed to be. And that's why there's the handwritten changes on there, because I don't want you to think you had that much money in your Trooper Hotel fund. You really didn't.
Hey, why, did we, did we add the other twenty-five thousand in there to the Trooper?
No. Lawana discussed that, or moved that as we knew it.
Okay, good, okay, okay. So we do have six thousand, five eighty-nine fifty-six, yes, so we have a couple.
As of April thirtieth, I don't know if anything was done, and if you had any... You hadn't anybody here yet?
I don't think I've such a, I'll just check our bills.
All right. But other than that, everything, Lawana and Matt. And we did bring in a large amount of the TDs on April thirtieth, because we thought our bank charter contract would end that month. So you're going to see a lot of monies at the end of the month that were not invested, and we did that as quickly as we could afterwards.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries, four zero. And when they do the reports, individual...
And when they do the reports individually, can I speak on Shelby's part with the human resources about Mary Ann Zine is coming in?
Oh, yes. Thank you. You want to watch the bills off?
I discussed it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hey, we have bills. Go ahead, LaWanna.
Okay, if you'll notice on the second page, the bottom entry, twenty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, that's for the final payment for the construction of the overhead awning at the weigh station, which is works welding. You'll go to page four, about halfway down, there's an entry for Autocar's Memorial Hospital, five hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy cents. We need to withdraw that payment from the bill cycle. Duane is doing some further investigation on that charge. You go to page eight on Roden Bridge, the third and fourth title from the bottom, five thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars is the rental on the roller, two rollers, and then six thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars is the rent on the six-wheel drive motor crater.
Did one of those go back, LaWanna? Or we still have them?
No, I don't know, we still have them. These are charges from the past thirty days. You go to page eleven, you will see expenditures that have been paid out of the Rural Fire Fund. Take notice of the number of fires that have been fought within the county. Sixty-six thousand dollars worth, twenty-four thousand, twenty-four thousand, eighteen thousand, and twenty-one thousand. Those are based to the individual fire departments, and they also include in lieu taxes money. On page twelve, twenty-eight hundred dollars to Texas State Surplus storefront, that is the Sheriff's Department purchasing some used radar units from DPS. Page thirteen, the adjusted total of this APCA cycle will be three hundred and fifty-three thousand, thirty-six dollars and forty-nine cents after the deduction of that Autocar's bill.
So we're done with the weigh station, Alpe? It's all done?
Yes, we set the scale right out. Of course, they're gonna, they're gonna do a little bit of active things on it. I noticed on here you had legal publishing is based ever words, and you have a whole tongue in there. They just send one bill and you have to divide it up?
That is correct.
Having all, all listed, you didn't, didn't identify which one's for. No, you have RFQ, city deposits, stray appliance, bidders, for every, for every entry. No, it's not saying which one's for which this department.
Correct. But in the description phase in our system, you can't itemize by department unless you're gonna create four separate vendors, which would be a nightmare.
And on page seven, we have Labor and Interior for Communications, Microwave Systems, Parts and Labor. What equipment is that on?
This has to do with the countywide radio systems. It's registered through LAPC. It's upgrading of those systems. We also have another pending bill for, I believe it's twenty-six thousand, that will be funded by a grant. But these were upgrades that were registered for the radio systems, like communication systems, where it's on the tower at the county unit, it's on, I think, the water tower in Falls City, water tower in Runde.
And in Roden Bridge, we have four thousand dollars for twenty-five pounds of cramatol. You know what that is, Percy?
Cramatol?
Jeffrey's not here?
I believe that's a weed.
Four thousand, five pounds?
We can Google it.
Wonder if that's right?
We can Google it.
I will. I don't have any.
Sounds like a pinball.
Yeah. Is it a powder mix? About twenty-five pounds. Can I weigh it a little?
I guess that's how the bill came into you. That's what it said.
Jeff approved it, he's for your free dollars bill, so I think it has to be paid.
Okay, that's fine. I'll ask him to do that, just to make sure.
Cramatol is common trade name for atrazine. Atrazine is a weed killer.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good deal to say.
Twenty-five thousand dollars, forty, four hundred? How many thousand?
Four thousand and twenty-five pounds.
I don't think that's expensive.
That doesn't sound right.
Whatever, are you on the page?
What does it cost per pound there?
It doesn't do, it costs a pound, but you can buy at the deep store for about, probably a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars a ton. It's a, it's a kind of weed killer, used specifically for wrestlers.
Would you like me to call Gina and have her pull the numbers, just to verify if this twenty-five pounds are due in the budget?
Yeah.
We're still gonna need to pay it.
Yeah, that's right. We're just gonna just pay it with the exception of that.
We just need to question him on what he's gonna use it for.
Well, LaWanna can check on it. She's saying she will.
What is it brand? Verifiable.
It's a, it's a, it's a brandier.
Yeah. Granular, you make sure of what.
We just need a motion page one, LaWanna, to check on it for us.
Ashley?
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, motion here is closed. Call the Department of Money Cert. Carol, I saw yours up here. Do you think it's possible you put it in all these papers? Um, I have, your total for the month is fifty-five, eight oh seven seventy. Carol? That's it. Let me get Carol's copy. Then there's Denise. Denise handed it to us, and did she leave?
Yeah.
Okay. Denise says that she has fourteen, eight, seventy-one, thirty-one collected, seventy-two, nineteen sixty-five was dispersed through the eighty-first and two-hundred-and-eighteenth Judicial District, and she retained in the county seventy-three, twenty-one, sixty-six. And that's what she gave to buy.
Does that have civil and criminal on top?
Um, this one is the criminal on top. And now here's her civil. Her civil was collected ten, three, ninety-eight, forty. And it says retained in the county. Her district clerk fees were forty-six, fifty-four, forty. The sheriff fees were fourteen, eighty-three, fifty, and the total state civil fees were one thousand, seventy, and total court costs were thirty-one, ninety, fifty. That was the civil part.
Just make sure you do a check up, because there's two.
Yeah, ma'am, they're separate. And the next is the county attorney. Herb, yours is up here. Do you want to give you a copy?
Yes.
For April, her monthly collection was one thousand, two twenty, two twenty-seven, seventy-two. Year-to-date was four thousand, one twenty-five, thirty-one. And it says total monies collected by the county attorney, one, one thirteen to four thirty thirteen, is sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and six cents. And that's compared to year-to-date, last year, four thirty, it says thirteen, but I think she means twelve, which would be fifteen, five oh three, eighty-eight. And then next is the Justice of the Peace.
Okay, on the last page, precinct one had a hundred and eighty-six cases filed and collected forty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents, and the county retained twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven, sixty-five.
Kathy, can I ask you a question? When y'all say, when y'all give us these numbers like two oh four, is that considered traffic citation, and what all is involved in that?
Uh, this, this is traffic.
Just traffic?
Traffic.
Okay. So I know like the, the evictions and stuff, that's not considered as important?
That's not reported.
Okay. Thank you, your invention.
If you look at Judge Cruz-Eco's court, she had a hundred and seventy-one cases filed in her court. She collected a total of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and ten cents. The amount retained by the county was thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifteen, nineteen. For my court, JP three court, there was a total of two hundred and thirty-two cases filed in my court. If you go to the last page, we collected fifty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty cents. The amount kept by the county was thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five, seventy-two, and retained by the state, what was sent to the state, sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven, sixty-eight. And Judge Soteno, he had a total of ninety-two cases filed in his court. He collected nineteen thousand, five hundred and one dollars and forty-four cents, retained by the county, thirteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven oh nine, remitted to the state, six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four, thirty-five.
Thank you. In the Juvenile Department, I believe, neighbor left the claim?
She did.
She did? I'll show you. The amount that being collected by the Juvenile Collection, that should be collected is twenty dollars, but percentage of collections was none. You know, this juvenile thing, it always sounds, it sounds like this, but there's a lot of times, there's a nonability to pay in a lot of these cases, and they're supervised, and that all goes to the Juvenile Department. This is not money that goes in the general fund. And so, just to clarify that, is that where LaWanna handles for everybody and everyone that's coming from? It's not a, it's not, it doesn't go to the general, neither of that or the budget. LaWanna keeps two separate issues. And the next one is Helen, Special Projects.
Okay, for developments, we had, we told a three hundred and seventy-five dollars collected for set bid, we had forty-eight hundred dollars.
Moving to number twenty-two, there's a report from Roden Bridge. Jeffrey's not here. He is with the people out of the bridge. And then is LaWanna.
As Bi stated earlier in her report, there was an error in posting some CD checks for Sheriff's Leo's monies. Therefore, on page two, you will see the type written changes. We did have one debt payment made in April to Alfred and Bellic, ten thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. The next page, the items of interest. The total county funds available as of April thirtieth were twenty-four million, seven hundred, seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-two cents. The total county funds invested as of April thirtieth were two million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-two cents. Non-invested funds as of April thirtieth were twenty-one million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents. As Bi mentioned earlier, a CD has since been acquired, actually several CDs with various maturity dates, and the date of investment was April, excuse me, May seventh. Sales tax received in April two thousand and thirteen, eight hundred and four thousand, eighty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. The same time period in two thousand and twelve, the sales tax was five hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-one cents. So we had an increase of two hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-three cents. Our April sales tax did increase over March, sales tax receipts by sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighteen cents. The request submitted on January tenth to the Texas Historical Commission for reimbursement number eight still remains outstanding. I have an email sent to Sharon Fleming to see what the issues are there. We did receive our grant reimbursement from DeGova in the amount of four thousand, sixty-four dollars and three cents for the tire collection event held in October of two thousand and twelve. The total expense for the tire event was four thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. DeGova reimbursed us four thousand, sixty-four dollars and three cents. So the actual cost to the county was three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
Thank you, LaWanna.
Thank you.
And Paul, you want to say something on Shelby's?
Now, we had Mary Ann Zine Hodgson with TAP come in about two weeks ago to do, I look for our personnel policy, and there's a couple of issues that we're gonna be dealing with. One of them basically is, we'll talk about it at budget, is how we're going to define part-timers when it comes to benefits. The new health care reform, health care reform bill, you take a timeframe, and they're recommending it a year, if someone worked, and they worked an average of thirty hours a week, we will be required to cover them in health insurance. So a lot of our people are, not a lot, we have several positions that are thirty-five-hour, thirty-two-hour positions, that maybe some of them we have to look at coming to budget times and changing our definition of when we receive benefits under the policy. I think the Family Medical Leave Act under the military changed in March, we have to update that. There's a couple of things we just need to update on, but that's the biggest one, in my opinion, is changing the definition of a part-timer getting benefits with the county and how the Commissioner's Court will look at the health insurance.
And y'all working on this, Bi, just to give the new ones in?
Yes.
That's good.
Yes, yes. She's, she's more up to date with change and everything, so that's why we have, we'll come in and look at it every once in a while to make sure we're up to date.
Thank you.
And it's, we all gather a quarter of mobile smell in Hall down here, and our Commissioner Madam spoke to you just last Friday, and he didn't come. Was he here? Did anyone see our Commissioner Madam?
He wasn't here. I don't know. I didn't see anybody.
Jeff from Victoria called over.